Why not?
All right, let's do this. Yes, sir. When are you ready? Okay. Welcome to the Burlington City Council. This is meeting number five, March 2nd, 2020, 5:30 in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers, City Hall. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, roll call, please.
Kreitzer.
I am here.
Graham Murray.
Present.
Mopin.
Here.
Rinker.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
All right, first up is a consent agenda. All matters listed on our Item One Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have had staff ask us to remove a Number Five Resolution approving the intergovernmental Transfer of Public Funds Agreement between Iowa Department of Human Services and the City of Burlington. Is there anyone else that would have something they would like to have removed from the consent? Anyone? Counsel? All right. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Kathleen?
Kreitzer.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Mopin.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye. Okay, moving on to hearings. First hearing is a statement for consideration of the sale of property locally known as 822 Linden Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tizlen.
This is a property we acquired through a 657A process as an abandoned property. Again, located at 822 Linden. It's at the corner of Linden and Ninth Street, here shown on the map, at the northeast corner. It is a single-family home, one-story, two-bedroom, one-bath, about 2,700 square-foot lot, so a small lot with a smaller home on it. Does need the standard work that a lot of these homes we require or acquire need prior to any occupancy of the building. So plumbing, electrical need to be signed off and brought up to code or signed off that they meet code by licensed electrician and plumber. Any work within the house needs to be substantially completed to meet the minimum housing code standards prior to any occupancy within the building. So anyone buying it has to fix it up before they are able to move in or rent it or sell it. Currently, we have two bids on the property. Improvements do have to be started within 60 days, completed within 180 days of sale. An additional 180 days may be granted if progress is continued to be made on the property. Currently, two bids, Don Harder, 1018 Monticello in the amount of $600, and Patrick Smith, 1210 North Ninth, in the amount of $500. Would ask if anyone else bid, or is a successful bidder that isn't of these two individuals, we'd want them to fill out the form with our code inspector tonight as well.
Okay. So the top bid right now is Don Harder. If you decide you want to bid on the property, the first time you bid, please come up to the elector and give me your name and address and then your bid. So is there anybody who would like to top the $600 bid for 822 Linden?
Patrick Smith.
Got you.
81210 North Ninth, Burlington, Iowa. Five, six, and one, $1,000.
Okay. $1,000. Is anybody else interested in the property for $1,000? Anybody else? Going once? Going? Okay.
DJ Rababah. I'm going to bid for Iowa Geo Properties LLC, 2127 South Main Street in Burlington. I bid 1,100.
1,100, okay.
No.
Get that name again.
Yeah.
DJ Rababah.
A.
A-R-E-A-B-A-K.
Got it. Okay. Anybody with any? 1,200? Okay, 1,200, Mr. Smith.
13.
1,300 to DJ. Mr., I can't, I'm struggling to pronounce it. Thanks, DJ. All right.
15.
1,500 to Mr. Smith. You're out. Is anybody else interested at 1,500? Going once? Going twice? Sold it to you, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Okay. See Mr. Tizlen for the details. Thank you, DJ. That's changed. All right. We have, I need a motion, please.
Motion to close.
I motion to close.
Second.
Second.
Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Now we need to, a motion.
Do the resolution first.
Oh, the resolution, I'm sorry.
That's what we're here.
Resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 822 Linden Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
And now do the motion. Now do the motion.
Okay. To amend Exhibit C of the Resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 822 Linden Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, with the property to be sold to Patrick Smith of 1210 North Ninth in the amount of $1,500. $1,500.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the motion to amend first.
Okay, motion to amend.
Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes, now as amended.
Right. Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Okay. And that'll make someone a lovely home. There you go, Mayor. Linda put me up to it. Number two is a statement for consideration of the 2020 general obligation corporate purchase and refunding loan agreements in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million.
We had Travis Squires from Piper Sandler here a couple of meetings ago reviewing the opportunity to save some funds on existing debt by going through a refunding, reauthorizing at a lower interest rate. He looked at two separate series, what we've talked about as 220A and 220B, or 2020A and 2020B. The 2020A is a general obligation refunding bond series, 5.44 million. It refinances three separate bond issues from the 2013 through 2015 era. The ability for what they're projecting for savings based on the current interest rate environment versus what we had financed those bonds originally for would save us about $247,000. Those are non-taxable, which is, and the second two are taxable Geo bonds refundings, the 2020Bs, total of $4,160,000, two separate bond issues there, both of them in the 2013 timeframe. Net savings on those two is a little less, in the $91,000 range. They meet a threshold, there's some thresholds that they set for, you have to hit a certain amount of savings before it makes financial sense. These are well above that. This is, I think, about a third of the interest cost on these that is in savings. Recommend moving forward with the refinancings. We would be doing a sale on those separate from, in advance of the sale of the next part, which would be the new bonds. These are tax-exempt as well. These are Geo general obligation corporate purpose bonds, the 220C series, 5.655 million. Two primary purposes here. Little over 1.4 million is for street construction. The primary project on that is the central street work that's anticipated to be done this summer. And then the other component, 4.2 million for flood protection, the work that we're hoping to be able to go out to bid on in April for this construction cycle to do the next stage of the flood wall, taken from the existing work that's been done and tying across the short-line railroad tracks. The process that we are doing also allows an authorization for a debt service levy to be part of this. Our budget that we will be considering for approval at the next council meeting authorizes the amount of taxes to be collected for repayment on that. That's been incorporated into what's being presented for a budget proposal that will be considered again at the next meeting. I think that's kind of the general overview of what these bonds cover.
I thought we covered it pretty good in the work session. Does anybody in the audience have any thoughts or concerns? Come on up, sir.
Leon Shaheen, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I guess I got a couple of questions. First, on the refunding portion of this bonding, are you extending the payment period?
No, the payment schedule will be the same as in the original.
Okay. All in all, the whole issue, how much does that increase the debt service levy approximately?
We're maintaining the same debt service levy, so I don't know how to work it in for what this, what portion of the debt service levy these are responsible for, but the whole goal is to maintain our existing debt service levy, and as time goes on, we'd like to see that reduced.
You and I both. Thanks, Leon.
Yeah, thank you, Leon.
All righty, any other thoughts or concerns from the audience? See none, counsel? Nope. All right, Kathleen, can I take a vote, please?
No, we need someone to close here.
Motion to close.
Oh, motion closed, sorry. Skipped it.
Second.
Who went and do that? In there. Okay, sorry. Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, number three is a state, number three.
Well, you should have, there should be a resolution.
Geez, what am I doing? I'm speeding through, yeah. Sorry.
I have a resolution expressing intent to enter into loan agreements approving preliminary official statements of general obligation bonds, Series 2020A, Series 2020B, and Series 2020C, and authorizing debt service levy.
Second.
Now Kathleen, can we vote?
Yes. Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
All right, now number three. Statement for consideration of the 2020 amendment to the urban renewal plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to the use of incremental property tax revenues.
Motion to close.
No, not motion to close, sorry.
Now we have to cover it first?
No, yes, we, I'm sorry, I'm all screwed up. I gotta hurry. Jim?
All right, so we have two separate public hearings on two separate components of the same main issue. We've had a developer come forward, Brent Dahlstrom, and maybe it wouldn't hurt to have him go ahead and do a pre, just a general overview of what your project is that we're looking to do, and can talk about where the different, the two different components fit into this whole process. Interested in doing that, Brent?
I'd love to, I'd like you to.
I'd love you to.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, counsel, for having me here tonight. Brent Dahlstrom, Merge Urban Development, 604 Place Street in Sierra Falls, Iowa. Yeah, we started this conversation, gosh, almost nine months ago, I believe, maybe even a little bit longer than that, with the understanding that the state of Iowa would be coming back out possibly with the workforce housing tax credits, and specifically for smaller communities, which includes this county that Burlington is in. And so we went about designing a building that could fit on two lots, that originally, one of the lots was up for RFP, and it, our preference would have been someone to maybe redevelop that building, and that just wouldn't have been us, so we waited for the RFP to finish and to see if someone was gonna come forward. But when the RFP became unanswered, we started talking about demolition of that building, the adjacent building, to work on a mixed-use project. So our proposal is for a mixed-use project, to bring commercial on the first floor and residential units for rent on the top floors. This would be an opportunity zone project with capital gain money being, coming from different investors, but myself and my partner and capital partner in Chicago being the two main investors in the project. We're currently under construction on multiple projects for the opportunity zone tax law, and this year we'll have six projects under construction. The, we need a development agreement in order to be eligible to make the application to the state for the workforce tax credits, and that is now expected to be in May, and with a decision every year for July 1 is when the state expects to announce those winners. So excited to be here and willing to take any questions that you may have.
And just for background on where this had gone, the council last, last year during the budget process approved borrowing $500,000 towards the demolition of the former police department building. As we were going through that process, Zach from Southeast Iowa Regional Planning and Jesse Caston had come forward with the idea, let's see if we can't find someone to redevelop this before we move forward with that demolition. As Brent was speaking, that, as they went through that process, they did not find anyone who was interested in presenting a redevelopment proposal on the property, which then put us into this discussion of looking to do a different type of development at this, at this site. The proposal that they're looking at is a participatory one. They're asking for $450,000 towards their demolition, demolition and cleanup costs at the site to get the site prepped. That would be a reimbursable dollar amount payable after they do the work. They are also asking for a 10-year, 100% TIF rebate. That does not give them the full amount of their taxes back. It gives them, if the existing property tax, overall tax levy between the different tax authorities is about $40 per thousand, the TIF portion of that varies from year to year. It's currently in that, in 32 to, it's been in the $32 to $33 range over the last few years. The max rebate that they are asking for is $2 million. If they come in at a property valuation at that $5 million, which is a minimum assessment agreement that's in the agreement, their taxes collected at 3250 over 10 years would be in the 1.5, 1.6 million range that we would be reimbursing to them. However, the agreement does give it a max up to 2 million, so if the TIF portion is a little bit higher than that, or if their valuation comes in a little bit higher than that, they, they would get a little bit more dollars if they could get turned back to them through this development agreement. The development agreement also calls for, has some contingencies to be fulfilled. A lot of that is due diligence on the part of Brent and his group on the property itself, a lot of which has been done. Part of it has to do with the workforce tax credits that they're trying to achieve. The due diligence period has a final closure date in this document of September 4. Is that correct? It's the beginning of September. So there are still some things that could have this agreement ultimately not, not go through.
Right.
Did I miss anything out of, well, the development itself, what you've, your proposal was, with the, what you're looking to rebuild is five stories?
Five stories.
60-plus units residential?
Yep.
And then commercial space on the, on the middle.
One story, commercial, and four stories of residential.
So about 56,000 square foot of residential, a little over 4,000 square foot of commercial space.
Yep, it's perfect.
Some of the things that I've heard expressed have been questions about what the exterior of the facility might look like. What could, what could you say to address that?
Yeah, so we'll go through, once approved, we showed what the example would look like, but our buildings, we build them with, with really that brick on that floors, one through three possibly, you can't go higher than three with brick because of the weight, and then metal panels beyond that. But we really do a design to, not that it is the exact type and design as the other buildings, but we want to make sure that we're respecting the buildings that are around it and fitting in and not, not sticking out too much. So we'll go through that and happy to bring back that design if we were aware of the workforce housing tax credits, but very similar to what we showed earlier in those presentations.
See, there are two hearings here. This first one is specifically for amending our urban renewal plan. There are two items that were added to the urban renewal plan in here. Well, it's one general description, it's the, the use of incremental property tax revenues in a development agreement related to the acquisition and demolition of the former police department building and the construction of a multi-use facility in the urban renewal area. We had to go through a process where we held public hearings. We put a notice in a paper about potential, or for consideration of this proposal, making sure that we met all the requirements for what's going, what the proposed use of TIF funds are. The final step here is this public hearing, to making sure that we can get any input from the public in regards to the use of tax increment financing for a project such as this.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions? For Mr. Dahlstrom?
So the agreement is a minimum $5 million valuation?
Yes.
Upon completion? And 10-year TIF, so the 1.5 million in the rebate?
It's 2 million max rebate.
But the expectation is with that valuation about 1.5 million?
That, that would be what I would say is the expectation, but I wanted to make sure, they wanted to make sure they were covering themselves in regards to what they could have possible. This is an annual appropriation rebate. When we do rebate agreements, there's, we've, we have, Stephanie, is it four rebate agreements out there? Three or four? And all of those in the, in the fall, we go through a process of appropriating for the following year's expected amount of rebate payments. That means that when a developer is doing a rebate agreement with us, they know that, they know that we're not likely to not approve subsequent year rebate payments, but there's that theoretical possibility.
So, when would that start? Does it start upon approval, or does it start upon occupancy?
They're looking at their major construction, the first year's valuation that they're looking to have would be for the construction that occurs in 2021, I think, like the 2022.
Okay. So it's upon evaluation of the increment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience? Come on up, please.
Leon Shaheen, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Just a point of order, we're on item number three and not item number four under hearings, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's essentially the same conversation for both, so.
Well, I'll save my comments at the right time.
Got it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chris Repke, 2228 Madison Avenue. How are you?
Chris, how are you, Chris?
Good. Since you're tying them both together, something just to remember with TIF is that it's not free, and it does cost the individual taxpayers. After discussions we've had in a few, couple other weeks ago and at, at meetings, it's about a buck per thousand for TIF. We've had that, it's come up before. And so I'm looking at my taxes.
What that basically says, if you didn't do the TIF payments and you released, and you didn't do any TIF projects, if we'd never done any TIF projects, there's no TIF debt, and you had the, all the valuations released, you would collect out of the general fund the same amount of property taxes with a dollar less levy.
Right, so, sorry, thank you for, but.
But that's also assuming that all of those projects get done.
No, that's assuming that those projects never get done, so like Mount Pleasant Street Bridge would never have been built.
Okay.
But it's something, I mean, you gotta consider this, especially, what's my mantra? Madison Avenue, anyways. You gotta laugh at that, but I mean, I know, I gotta be, till you put the pavement down, you're gonna hear from me on that, all right? Anyways, for example, my house at the current, with the rollback, this is taking a rollback, it's about 90, it's about $99 a year. Talked to Mr. Ferno, the project for this one's about seven cents per thousand, so yeah, it's about $7 per year. But again, remember, that's out of taxpayers, taxpayers that are paying money for people, you know, for building things, kind of financing people to build things when they need to finance and build things at their own homes. And so my point is this, please consider what the taxpayers and what burden falls upon them. I'd like you to see with future things, maybe looking at the older neighborhoods all over town for TIF districts. You don't have to do roads and that, instead of taking away the parking on Madison Avenue, maybe keep it with a TIF project with a TIF zone, urban renewal, because our older neighborhoods need some renewal, you know, and not just these other areas. And consider that when you do TIF, it does have a tax impact on households. My house with this value, my older house, I would say that would be 50 bucks, about 45 to 50 bucks a year, okay? Based, remembering if things go fast. So it does have an impact. So over 10 years, it's 70 bucks for the project of the old police department on general TIF over 10 years, that's $1,000, so, on the current house. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else have any concerns about this particular issue? No? Counsel? No?
I just want to say, I mean, there's, there's a cost of doing it, and then there's a cost of not doing it. So the opportunity cost is the 144,033.66 cents of taxes that are generated 10 years from the occupancy date. If, if we decide not to do something, and this gentleman decides to find another community to build his building in, which is entirely possible, that lot, we could spend $500,000 to tear down the building, the lot could sit empty for the next 10 years, and then we've actually lost a significant amount of revenue. So I just want to point that out, that when I make my decision, it's gonna be based off not only the cost with providing the TIF, but the opportunity cost that exists by not doing anything, so.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. So now we can go to a motion close?
Yep.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
All right. Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve the 2020 amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area.
Second.
Kathleen?
Kreitzer.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Yes.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes. All right, moving on. Number four is a consideration, much of the development agreement with Merge LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments in an amount not to exceed $2 million.
So we don't need to cover this again?
Well, Jim, do you have anything to add?
Well, just, again, this is the development agreement, developer is agreeing to construct 60-plus units of residential housing, 56,000 square foot of space, main floor, a little over 4,000 square foot of commercial space. Minimum assessment agreement of $5 million includes TIF rebate for 10 years, 100% of the TIF rebate, rebateable amount, up to $2 million of rebate payments. If they do not receive the 2 million in the 10 years, whatever under. whatever under that is received, it's, they're just never going to receive that. It also has the, for the, towards the site preparation costs, $450,000 to go to them. It contemplates the selling of the land to them for no, no dollar amount. The process of the resolution that's attached here is approving the agreement, it's also approving setting the, the consideration of the sale of the land for the April 6 council meeting. It's a separate step that is subsequent to this. And I think that's it. I know I covered a couple of other parts earlier, but.
Anybody from the audience have a concern?
One more time. Leon Shahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. You all know how I feel about TIF. I can't understand why we're using tax incentives to build more housing in a town that's losing population. You kind of have the cart before the horse. If you don't have good paying jobs, you don't need the housing. And by doing this housing, not only is it not needed, but you're driving down the value of my property, which is exactly the opposite of what you've been trying to do with everything else. I don't, nobody said what the rental is going to be on these places, but there's, was a previous project and it hasn't been begun. Given the market turmoil, I'm sure there's going to be outside investors required to make this happen, and given the turmoil, that isn't going to happen. I would urge you to vote no. Alls you're doing with this is raising my taxes and devaluing my home. You already approved in the previous public meeting, pretty much a budget, even though you have another hearing coming up, where you spend $6 million a year on economic development. When is it enough? We keep spending all this money for economic development, increasing the tax base. If you don't get taxes from a property, you're not increasing the tax base. And somebody, my neighbors and I, are the ones that have to pick up the tab. We need to stop doing this. Alls you're doing is driving up taxes and driving people from Burlington. You're not bringing people here. No jobs, no more people coming into town. And when you raise taxes, you force people on social security to leave. This needs to stop.
Thank you, Leon. Anybody else from counsel, or from the audience have any concerns? Counsel? Okay.
All right, so motion close?
Second.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Mopin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
All right, I have a resolution approving development agreement with Merge LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement and setting date for public hearing on disposition of city-owned property.
Second. Kathleen, when you're ready.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Mopin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Number five is statement for consideration of plans and specifications for the 2020 Dankworth Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Project. Mr. Tisland, please.
This project is intended to resurface the courts at Dankworth, where there's five current tennis courts, filling cracks in low areas and then having a new surface over the court. The surface has a 25-year warranty against cracks. It does require new painting or application every five to seven years to maintain that warranty. The initial project's estimated at $185,000. The, every five to seven years, it's estimated at $25,000 to $30,000. Looking at a five to seven-year project, we evaluated those as well. Those have a two-year warranty on product and workmanship for that product, or for that project. The quote we got was over $90,000 and factoring out over the next 25 years, it'd be about $100,000 more to do, resurface that every five to seven years. And then we, just from the previous resurfacing, there was about 1,700 lineal feet of new cracks over the previous 1,000 lineal feet of cracks. So it's compounding kind of on itself, those cracks every year. So we estimate if we didn't do a larger project, that it would, the cost would just substantially increase every time. So this does go for bid, looking to open bids March 24th and then kind of evaluate costs and bring that back forward to council. We did have starker funds, 105,000 for this project, would be looking to other funds, whether that's Gem or Fund or outside funds to complete the project.
Okay, anybody have any thoughts or concerns from the audience? We'll do you in just a minute, Ms. Proppin. Thoughts or concerns from the audience on that? Counsel, go ahead, Bill?
When would this be done?
Looking to do in the fall. If it, if we award bid, it'd be, talking to the contractor, August timeframe. It does take a few weeks.
Thank you.
I'm just curious if we, how much is this going to cost in the yearly, every five to seven years? How much?
Uh, 25 to 30,000 approximately.
I just want to make sure we don't run out of funds so we can't fix up the pool. I think a lot more people use the pool.
Okay. Matt, Robert, anything? Jimmy, have anything to add? No?
No.
Okay. Mr. Rinker?
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Mopin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2020 Dankworth Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Project.
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Mopin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes. All right, moving on to resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant Program Multi-Family Unit Production Rental Disca, Disaster Recovery Fund Contract with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the TAMA 2 project at 300 to 310 Jefferson Street.
Second.
Eric?
This is a grant awarded to the city for the, essential for the TAMA project. This is CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant funds through Iowa Academic Development Authority in the amount of $2.5 million. And it is to go towards constructing 22 units at the TAMA site, 300 to 310 Jefferson Street. They were previously awarded 3.2 million through this grant that had been reduced. There was some requirement for some of the stormwater in the alley to be eliminated from the project, but the award fund goes primarily to the residential housing component. 51% of those units, so 12 units are required to be income qualified at 80% of the median family income for the county. So that's, for one person, that's 38,000. Two people, it'd be 43,000. A family of four would be 54,000. The other 10 units would be, could be market rate units. This award, they do have to go through environmental review, so the soonest, that takes approximately two months to go through that process. They are working with Myers Construction on, as a project manager for the site. The city previously approved a development agreement with, I guess, sub-recipient, Historic TAMA LLC, Doug Wells. It does require some project management, does have some requirements for processing of payments per the agreement. It also has Region, Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission doing some of the administration for those income qualifications for the Davis Bacon wages. So they'll be involved in this process throughout as well, but anticipate construction hopefully occurring this summer yet. He is looking to, as he stated at the work session, complete the residential portion first, because that's the portion where these funds are guided towards, and then finishing up the first floor commercial after that.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts or concerns in the audience about the TAMA 2 project?
This is kind of a preliminary design on the building, a three-story building with first floor commercial and then upper-story residential.
No, no questions or concerns? Counsel?
I, I, I'll go first. I'll for one say I'm really excited about the project. I'm thankful that Mr. Wells stayed in on the project and we're not looking just at a hole in the wall, a hole on Jefferson there. So, you know, I'd be excited to see that project come to fruition.
Anybody else?
Yep. I agree with the mayor and I'm happy that the design is a little bit more aesthetically pleasing for our community, so.
Okay. Well, that's all, that's it. Let's vote, Kathleen.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Mopin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Absolutely, yes. Next up is a res, oh, I'm sorry, number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the docking agreement with the American Queen Steamboat Company.
Do you want to discuss both these at once?
I need a second.
I don't know. Well, I'm asking, do you want to discuss both?
We've, we've had conversations both with American Queen and Viking for docking agreements. American Queen, we've worked with over the last several years. Having Viking come in has made one major change to American Queen happen. That has to do in the area of rates charges. If you see in the agreement that's being presented, something that they have not done before is pay a docking fee. They talk about it being estimated at close to a dollar per passenger, based on the capacity of the various vessels. They're looking at a 250 minimum fee to be paid. The American Queen would be $450, the American Countess $250, and the American Duchess $250. So depending on which one was docking, we would get those respective amounts. They are asking for priority for the use of the northernmost docking point, which is their traditional docking point, and they are asking for a five-year agreement. In the, in the course of the document, they also, it also mentions the five years would commence upon agreement, upon the date of its execution, and shall, absent notice from either party, would automatically renew for an additional five-year term. So it would have one additional five-year term. The other agreement, well, we can go ahead and do that, I'll cover what's in the Viking after.
Okay. Is any thoughts or concerns about the Delta Queen or the American Queen Steamboat Company agreement from the audience? Counsel? It's been discussed pretty thoroughly. Kathleen, let's vote.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes, please.
Mopin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes. Resolution number three, please.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the amended docking agreement with Viking USA LLC.
So we had approved a docking agreement with Viking.
Second.
Sorry, back in.
It's catching, it's catching.
The end of 2019, they asked for extending that agreement beyond 2023. This agreement would extend that agreement for another five years. It has language written in it that would say that it would automatically renewal, renew for five-year, for five-year increments unless somebody provided notice at least two years in advance of one of those five-year renewals. So the, this has taken the agreement at least out through 2028. If we wanted to end the agreement in 2028, we'd have to provide notice at least two years prior to that in 2026. And then as we hit any, if we allow it to move forward, prior to, again, in any of those five-year increments, we'd have to provide notice two years in advance. Their original agreement with us had the dollar per passenger docking fee that they were willing to pay, and this continues that language. They are asking for priority docking at a second docking location, which would have to still be constructed. They are offering as part of the agreement to provide $50,000 of cost reimbursement towards that second mooring point. And I think that's essentially the terms of the agreement that's, that we have.
Okay. Any thoughts or concerns from the audience? Counsel, I, oh, come on up.
Leon Shahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. In terms of the second mooring point, how much is it going to cost us to do that?
Do you have any estimate? We're not sure. It is probably north of that, but it's, I don't think we're talking 500,000. We're, it's maybe, my guess, just based off of what other things cost, maybe half of the, the overall cost, but that's really just throwing something out.
And that's assuming the boating infrastructure grant doesn't get awarded.
Yes.
So if that gets awarded, then the boating infrastructure grant.
Will cover it.
Will cover the cost of the dockage that's already in the riverfront plan.
But yes, Darby, it is the additional cost, and, and we need to know that.
Anyone else? Counsel?
I just want to say, I think this is going to be a good thing. If we're getting a dollar per passenger, we've got two competing cruise lines, and they both want to use Burlington as a port. Every person that comes off the boat to visit our downtown area that's, that's growing, and, you know, and getting to experience what we've done with the Taggart Grant, I think that's a good thing. So I, I'm pretty excited about it, so.
Yeah, you're right. Touring the Mississippi has become a big business. I was reading about how many more ships or boats that they're building, and the tourist opportunity is there. So I'm glad that we're embracing this. I think it's a good thing for Burlington.
I sure hope we don't have to cancel with the two-year notice because we're being overrun by tourists that are spending their cash in our, our, our community. So, anybody else? Kathleen, let's vote.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Mopin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving agreement with Burlington Riverfront Entertainment, BRE, B-R-E, for management of riverfront properties for six years.
Second.
This would be a continuation of the agreement that we have had with Burlington Riverfront Entertainment for the last three years. The, the agreement that we're operating under currently, we provide a subsidy of 250,000 annually, and I have now lost my spot in my notes, so I'm going to have to go off of memory. But the, the new agreement, six years, the first three years would be a subsidy of 200,000 annually, and then the, the subsequent three years would be 175,000 annually. So they're stair stepping that down. Part of the offset for that will be for the events that are grand.
Legacy events.
Legacy events, thank you. Grandfathered events. Historically, we've collected the full fee on that. This new agreement, it would be split 80/20. The effective date for the new agreement is January 1, 2021. So for events that began after, that are scheduled after January 20, January 1 of 2021, those would go through the same 80/20 formula that the, that any other event that is booked under the existing agreement goes under. Our current arrangement has language in there for steamboat days to be the liquor provider, with BRE providing oversight on that. The new agreement, BRE will be the provider of alcohol services. And so now they're taking on the responsibility and the legal liability for making sure that people are properly trained and, and are taking adequate steps to maintain that license and, and operate by the terms of the liquor license. Otherwise, am I missing anything else for any changes? I don't think there are any other changes. One thing I had noted in a previous meeting, some continuation language, that just to, as a reminder. a reminder, our existing agreement provides 128-day notice provision. If there's a need to cancel the agreement or modify it because we've taken a facility out of service or significantly altered the arrangement for it, there's, there's a process for that to occur. We'd originally put that in with the thought that we may not be able to financially afford the auditorium. That's always still an issue as we move through from one budget cycle to the next, so having that language in there is appropriate. It also encapsulates the, the fact that you do have an agreement for, with another entity to look at the idea of having a hotel built down there and a different management agreement on that facility that's active over the course of this next year. That would allow that, if you were to actually want to move forward with any proposal that came from them, to move from one entity to the other. I think that really kind of covers even out of the existing terms, what's of note. Everything else would be continuing operations as, as we have been.
Okay. Do you have anything to add? All right. Any thoughts or concerns from the audience?
This is the question. Chris Repke, 2028 Madison Avenue. The city also pays the utilities and all that, correct?
Correct.
What, have, is there any thought of the, you know, the 107 to 200,000, the city ever getting that full amount back with what's going on down at the auditorium? I'm just thinking from, you know, it's taxpayer money. I'm thinking kind of a little bit as an investor, if you're an investor. I understand that you put it like a park, but there's the cost you gotta look at. Do you ever see getting back the full, like, say, 200,000 that you do as a subsidy? Just a curiosity.
Not in the, not in the first six years of this agreement, but I know that the, the goal from BRE is to see that, I mean, their, their goal is to see the facility used more and to raise enough revenues to see the operating subsidy come down to a, a lower level as, as time goes on. And you're, you're seeing it in the, this revision. They, they're hoping to see that as we move forward too.
Because, I mean, it's a lot of money. I mean, it's quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dana?
Dana Johnson, president of BRE. To respond to the gentleman's question, actually, with the, since we have been in the facility, we've saved the city over $40,000 in utility bills from the previous management. And along with that, we have also made things more efficient in the building. So we are working towards helping efficiency, because we know they're all old buildings. And so that's one of the things we've put in. Actually, we've taken some of the steps out of the city management, such as we've taken all of the network and IT business out of that, so the city doesn't have to pay for any of that. We've gone on separate phone lines. So there's all different kinds of things that have changed and have saved the city money in the last three years, so.
Thank you for that.
Any other thoughts or concerns from the audience? Counsel?
I'm just, I'm excited that you guys are using it, and I'm seeing progress, and I'm really excited by that. And I'm anxious to see where you guys are heading. I think you, I think you guys are going in the right direction, so again, I appreciate it.
That was just an event there this last weekend, and the group did a fabulous job, so. Anybody else, have any?
I'll say, I've sat on that board since its inception, and it's, the group's doing an amazing job. I'm extremely satisfied with the progress they've made over the last two years, so.
All right. There's no other comments. Kathleen, let's vote.
Kreitzer?
Yes, please.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution number five, please.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the intergovernmental transfer of public funds agreement between the Iowa Department of Human Services and the City of Burlington, Iowa. Give me a second.
Second.
Chief?
So, I guess I was getting ahead of the game a little on that forum. The state's gonna change the wording up in there, so I'm gonna urge you to vote no. I don't know how often that happens. Somebody comes here and says, please vote no, but. So vote no, and I'll bring back a new agreement hopefully next council meeting, or they're pushing out our deadline until the end of April, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Sounds good. Any concerns from the audience? Counsel? Kathleen, let's vote.
Kreitzer?
No.
Graham Murray?
Negatory.
Mopin?
No.
Rinker?
No.
Phillips?
No.
All right, now we've reached the end of the meeting, so we'll entertain additional comments from the audience. Please understand why we want your comments and concerns, that if it's not on the agenda, we may not address it. Is there any additional comments or concerns from the audience? Yes, Mr. Shahean?
One more time, and it's not exactly about money this time. I have concerns as far as our law enforcement in this town. I think we unduly emphasize drug enforcement over other issues. Had an incident in our neighborhood, and I won't mention addresses for the sake of the, those involved, but somebody tried to kick in my neighbor's door this past weekend. I don't think the same amount of effort is applied to vandalism, and as far as I'm concerned, that was attempted burglary, as there is applied to the drug enforcement. We had a big bust a while back, arrested the last count, I saw eight people. My guess of the effort involved was 15 man-years or more. That would be 1.5 million dollars. I just don't see the same kind of activity. My neighbors were terrified. And there's cameras all over Mount Pleasant Street, so I don't get accused of a heinous crime. When I walk my dog at night, I make sure I show up on everybody's camera. And you could go down that street, and it was local kids that did, at least three of the five. With those cameras, you can tell which street they live on, more than likely, north of Mount Pleasant Street. Take those pictures, show them the, either the high school or middle school principals, and arrest those involved. But it was terrifying, and I ran into them when they were making a break from my neighbor's place. They're gonna do the same thing to my car. And I'm really upset. You know, I, I don't, of all the drugs you talk about, LSD, heroin, meth, the most dangerous substance on earth is testosterone in a young male. And we need to devote more effort to see those that do the damage like happening in my neighborhood are brought to justice sooner rather than later. Because when it goes unchallenged, it just compounds. I'm sick of it.
Duly noted. Thank you, sir. Any other comments or concerns from the audience? Chief?
I'll be glad to address that for you, Leon, if you just want to get me the particulars on it, for sure. The effort that, I mean, it wouldn't take as much manpower as we had for the, for the operation we had last fall, of course, to handle this. But if anyone's ever dissatisfied with the service they get in a neighborhood, even if you know somebody that didn't like the service that we provided or the response that we gave, I'm always more than willing to take that information and look into it for them. So just so that, that you're aware of that in the general public, that if, if you're, if you're not getting the attention that you feel is necessary for any kind of issue in the neighborhood, we have the personnel that can look into it and the extra attention that needs to go to that. So I do feel for you, Mr. Shahean, and for your neighbors, and we'll be glad to look into it and take care of it.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, anything else? Counsel, Bill, anything?
Just that the Leap Party down at the auditorium Saturday night was an excellent event, and had a great time.
Okay, I'll get the staff here. Go ahead, counsel.
Just now that the weather's warming up, there's more pedestrians out, runners, bikers, just everybody be careful.
Matt?
I don't have anything.
Robert?
Thursday, I popped in on the Citizens Academy. They were at Public Works, and I think they were a really great group of people. I like to sit and listen to Nick talk about the, the projects and, and how he's trying to do sewer work at the same time as street work to save money and not have to repeat a project twice. So kudos to you on that. And I'm really impressed with how these Citizens Academies are run and, and the things that they're learning. So it was cool that I had the chance to, to stop in and be part of that.
All right. Mrs. Frevert, do you have anything to add back there? No?
Hi.
Chief Kramer?
On a little more lighter note, the end of March always marks our opportunity to compete against the Midwest Magic Team. And so this year.
Are you going to win this year?
Oh, most definitely. We've been talking with some of their players, and so it's, it's come out that they're gonna do a seven-peat this year, but I need to come on record and say that we've been practicing hard. We have some new players, and our players have been practicing hard, and there's some documentation out there with film showing the skills that we have. So like I said, we've been challenged by a couple of the players, and, and they'll hear about it, I'm sure, and they've heard about it already, but we're coming for them this year, that's for sure.
Where's the documentation at on that?
I think it's been, it's been distributed by a lieutenant on the department, and I don't know if some of the players on the Midwest Magic Team want to see that, that video, but I think they're running scared right now.
Chief, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to step on their toes any, but I've heard rumors that you can dunk. Is this true?
It's not me, but, but there's some people that on, on my department that can make it happen, that's for sure, so we'll see.
All right. Good luck this year, Chief.
You may not know this, but Jim Furno can dunk.
All right. Chief Traxel, nothing? Mr. McGregor, nothing? Stephanie Stucker, nothing? Eric Tisland, nothing? Jim?
I heard we had a good emcee on Saturday night.
He was wing, he was winging it.
Who's that?
And I do have the radio this time, so.
Speaking of that.
That means that will be you guys next week.
Yeah, next week, so I'll be thinking, check your schedules. Okay. Bill and I, you would?
I'll do it, I'll do it next week.
Okay. You want to do it, Bill?
Sure.
All right, you guys go. I could, that'd be great. Anything else? I guess I, I get the last word. Let's, I need a motion to close.
Your honor. Well, go ahead.
Motion to close.
Second.
Now everybody's second. Great. Good job. Kathleen, let's vote.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes, please.
Mopin?